All right. Welcome back to the regular meeting of September 8th, 2020. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all council members are present.
All right. Because we moved our closed session to the next meeting, there's no closed session report. At this time, I'd like everyone to stand for the invocation led by Councilmember Brenner, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Dixon.
Let us all be still for a moment as we call upon the all-loving God of our understanding that is always within us. Together, we turn within to that sacred place in our hearts where only love resides, and we allow the power and presence of God's divine will to infuse our minds and conversations with only the highest and best words and actions. We know that it is God's good pleasure to bring forward perfect solutions, encouraging loving kindness and collaboration expressed through us all. As each of us is born in the image and likeness of God, we remember the meaning of this truth, that beyond our name, age, gender, religion, or stature in life, our essence is that of eternal, immutable, holy goodness. We are endowed with the divine duty to bless everything and everyone. And so, we take this moment to bless this meeting, knowing that in God, all things are possible, that life is elegantly supportive and cooperative. It is from this place of divine intelligence that we bless these proceedings with God's eternal light of peace, wisdom, and inspiration. Only that which is for the highest good is effortlessly revealed tonight. We allow God to direct, guide, uplift, and connect us to only those solutions that ensure wellness, goodness, and prosperity for all, in deep and abiding appreciation, knowing that when we get out of the way, God efforts not in the creation of good. We faithfully allow it to be, and so it is. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in saluting the flag of our great nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Madam Clerk.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
All right. Now is the time for City Council announcements and oral reports from City Council on committee activities. It would also be the time to ask for items to be placed on a future agenda under A1. We'll start with Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let everyone know, as they already know, that the weekend on the harbor was absolutely as packed with people that you could possibly... I've never seen that many boats in the Trump parade ever. And I just want to commend everyone in our city who is involved with protecting us with that, lifeguards, police, fire, everyone. And our new harbor department was there. And we need to know that they did a good job, and they need to grow and get a little bigger because, obviously, the demands of that harbor are spectacular now. We know it. We've seen it. And I just wanted to commend everybody that we got through it safely, and that's a big deal for us. So congratulations on everybody who was involved with that. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. As many of you know, the county was moved from purple to red, and that's actually a good thing. It's a little confusing how the system's set up by the state for the COVID stages. And so, allows our schools to open up in two weeks, which is essentially the 22nd. We have a next city council meeting. So just so to be sure that we coincide with the opening of schools, I'd like to A1 total opening of our parks and playground equipments. I've heard reports that some is being disregarded, and some equipment is still locked or put off limits. But I think now is more than the appropriate time to allow children to return to school and to play in the playgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hurdman.
Yeah, the last couple of weeks have been a little busier than before. The Tidelines Water Quality Committee meeting met for the first time since last March. We had a virtual meeting. It went really well. We had an update on the project we've been working on now for almost three years, which is the design and installation of the trash wheel that's going to be at the... where the San Diego Creek empties into Upper Back Bay, close to Fletcher Jones up there. We had a report on that project, the status of it, where we are, the funding, the design. And we're anticipating that project to be completed by March of 2021. Airport always takes up a lot of my time. We had another airport task force meeting that Representative Ruda has organized with the FAA. We had our second meeting with them. I attended another meeting that was organized by Representative Ruda just this last week. Involved myself, Steve Rosansky from the Chamber of Commerce, Dave Webb, our Director of Public Works, and two members of the Coastal Commission. We met over on the beach on the peninsula, and we talked about sea level rise. Harley was interested in hearing our city's response to sea level rise. And we were interested in hearing his response to sea level rise and what he has planned. Technical departure subcommittee met. And I guess the big news that comes with the airport at this point in time is that the Board of Supervisors let the contract to... three, two full-time FBO operators and one half-time FBO operator. And the city of Newport Beach has been actively lobbying the Board of Supervisors to include language within the leases that have a direct impact on quality of life issues for the people that live in Newport Beach and are affected by noise from the airport. We've been successful in a couple of areas. We've been unsuccessful in three areas. So our lobbying will continue. Our lobbying of the Board of Supervisors will continue up until September 15th, when these leases are scheduled to receive final approval from the Board of Supervisors. So that's about it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brenner.
Seems like most of my time recently has been dealing with complaints on traffic and loud vehicles in Corona del Mar primarily. And so, we had a District 6 Town Hall meeting on August 27th at 5:00 PM. We had over 90 people on the line with us. We had Damon Soros, the Traffic Division Chief for the Newport Beach Police Department. We had Dave Webb from our Public Works, Simone Jurgis from Community Development, and Tony Bryan, who's our traffic engineer for the city. They delivered presentations about what we're dealing with and about the possibility of some solutions. We've got a lot of citizens that are very active in trying to figure out what we can do to solve some of these problems we're dealing with. We've got one committee that's very concerned with residential parking permits. We've got another committee that's very concerned about potentially one-way streets in Corona del Mar, and we've got almost everyone upset about loud vehicles. So we got to hear a lot of information from our city staff. And Damon informed us that the Newport Beach PD has really been focused on these loud vehicles, and he... Something like 150 citations had been issued for these loud vehicles just in our area within the last couple of weeks before he was speaking. And he assures me that they are continuing, certainly not just in Corona del Mar, but I'm encouraging our residents to call when they come in south of town, because then by the time they get north of town or they get out on MacArthur, then the police have a chance to actually intercept them and give them a ticket. And so, the phone number that Damon gave me for us to call in... Chief Lewis assured me that we should be calling in when we're hearing these loud vehicles that were not bothering them, because I was very concerned about that. But if he has a traffic officer in the area and we hear a loud pot of motorcycles coming in south of town, then possibly by the time they're going north on PCH, they can intercept them at some point. So the phone number they gave me for citizens to call is 644-3717. And this presentation was recorded, and it is on our city website. We also have it on the CDM Residents Association website and the CDM Chamber website. And we also have a group that is continuing. We're going to be doing a survey of Corona del Mar residents to find out how they feel about these things. I emphasize that we're not moving forward with the possibility of one-way streets unless we have a significant majority of our citizens that really want us to do that. And we're also doing the same thing with residential parking. So we have formed a subcommittee that is developing a survey that we'll be mailing out to all of our residents about that and working with our city staff moving forward on those issues. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon.
Couple of things, just to follow up on Mr. Hurdman and our... Let me take my thing off here. The general aviation improvement plan, as he mentioned, residents will be hearing about the city's efforts encouraging residents to write to the Board of Supervisors. All these communications will now start coming forward in various city information packs. Tomorrow is Wednesday. Friday, Stu News, may have been in today's Stu News. It wasn't today's. I haven't had a chance to read it. We'll be encouraging... There'll be an op-ed. There is an op-ed in Stu News to encourage residents to write to our Board of Supervisors. As Mr. Hurdman said, there's a lot of good, but we're not done yet. And it's important that we make clear to the supervisors that we want certain key points included in the lease agreements. It's not complicated. Just listen to Newport Beach, and they'll get the message. And we'll... Mr. Muldoon and Mr. Hurdman and I will be meeting with the Board of Supervisors individually over the next several days. So that's good news. Number two, I want to thank our public safety forces. They were out in full force this past weekend. I have not yet heard the statistics of how many... Do you know off the top of your head how many visitors we had? There were a lot. But the sirens were going pretty much... I don't know if they were fire trucks or police cars, but the sirens were going all day long and into the evening. So I know our public safety personnel were very busy keeping us safe. So thank you for that. An announcement. I will have a town hall, a Zoom virtual town hall, next Monday, September 14th, 5:30 PM. And there's been communications out on that. So I encourage anyone who's interested in District 1 communications. It's my first town hall. Those of you know that I love having town halls, but because of virtual... We haven't had one, so now we will. Ms. Brenner's reminded me how important those are. So I will get back on track. I want to propose an A1 item to have a resolution by the city of Newport Beach to announce its commitment to end child marriage in California and calling specifically for 18 No Exceptions Law. Many cities are passing this ordinance or resolution. Irvine passed it unanimously. Anaheim passed it unanimously, and other cities are doing the same. So more to come on that, but I'd like to A1 that item, please. Thank you, and that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Avery.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the board meeting for the Orange County Sanitation District.
Okay. Let's see. We've got a slide for my first one. Well, this is coming up. For Recreation Update, Fall Program Registration opened on September 1st with 700 participants enrolled in the first two days. Recreation senior services offering more than 100 in-person outdoor programs and online classes for families of all ages and interests. The community's response has been overwhelmingly enthusiastic about the variety of program offerings in a safe and fun environment. Some highlights include surfing, adult and youth tennis, preschool classes, karate, and theater. New this fall is rec recess, created for students to take a break from distance learning... Thank you, by the way, with in-person recreation programs. We have a variety of classes in the area of athletics, art, dance, language, science, and water sports to keep your kids having fun all week long. For more information and to register, visit newportbeachca.gov/recreation. And programs, as you can imagine, are filling quickly, so do not delay. All right. We'll move into the next agenda item, which is matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda. These are non-debatable. I'll read through each one, and if you'd like to consider it a future meeting, please raise your hand. The first is consideration of an emergency ordinance to enforce state guidance on face coverings by administrative citation. If you'd like to see this brought back, please raise your hand. Okay.
That was... No one raised their hand.
Item number two is consideration of opposing Prop. 15. If you'd like to see this brought back, please raise your hand.
It's Councilmember... Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Protam Avery, and Councilmembers Muldoon, Duffield, and Dixon.
Okay. Item number three, consideration of ways to expand the Newport Beach Municipal Code to address code violations, including short-term lodging, fireworks, and noise complaints. If you'd like to see this, please raise your hand.
That'd be Councilmembers Dixon, Brenner, and Hurdman.
Okay. Item number four, consideration of supporting Proposition 20.
That would be Mayor O'Neill, pardon me, Mayor Protam Avery, and Councilmembers Dixon, Duffield, and Muldoon.
Okay. And item number five, resolution to express the city's council's appreciation of the Newport Beach Fire Department for all the mutual aid provided during 2020. If you'd like to see this, please raise your hand.
That is unanimous.
All right. We'll move into public comments on... I'm sorry. We'll move into the consent calendar. Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 13. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommended in action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar by separate action.
All right, Council. Now is the time to poll, declare conflicts, or state a vote. Mr. Duffield. Mr. Muldoon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item number seven, I have a conflict due to a streetlights project could use underground construction.
Okay.
By employing a telecom.
Mr. Hurdman.
I have none.
Ms. Brenner. Ms. Dixon.
I have none.
Mr. Avery.
I have none.
I need a lodge of recusal on item number nine, given family relationship to someone over in the Huntington Beach Police Department. So with that, do you have a motion, Mr. Avery?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move the balance of consent calendars on items 1 through 15. With no items pulled, and recusal from councilmembers Muldoon on item 7, Mayor O'Neill on item 9, and an amendment on item 1, the minutes.
Okay. At this time, we'll go to public comment on the consent calendar. Do we have any public comment in the community room?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Nancy Scarborough. I have a question... Well, actually, it's a comment, I guess, on item number eight regarding the fire trucks for Pierce Manufacturing. I have no questions as to whether or not we need those. I do have a question about the purchase terms. I'm wondering if the purchasing... In order to purchase these, you're being asked to approve tonight a prepayment with a 3% discount. That means we would be paying $1.6 million immediately, and the trucks will not be ready for a year or more. I'm wondering if the Finance Department would make more income if we retained that money and paid for those at the end of the year. Also, by paying in advance, we'd have to purchase a $3,500 performance bond. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments in the community room? All right. Do we have any calls? We have five calls on consent. Okay. Hi. Make sure you mute what you're listening to, and go ahead.
Hi, yes, my name is Doyle Borden, and I have comments about the signs on Balboa Walkway, Balboa Island Walkway.
Okay. So that will be essentially... That would be the next item to come up, which would be the public comments on non-agenda. Right now, we're only talking about the consent calendar.
Okay. So should I be put on hold for that?
You know, if you hang up and then... Hang on. How are we going to do this? Because if we can't really tell, right?
I've been on hold for like 40 minutes already.
Yeah. No, no, no. Trust me. You're going to get on. I'm just trying to figure out how to make sure you get on. Hang on. Doyle, just hang on one second. Let me just figure this one out.
Sure.
I'm going to go out on a limb and guess that maybe all four or all five are not going to be on consent. Do I just basically say, call right back after this item is done, and then we just make sure we give them a buffer so they can call right back? Yeah? That's how we're going to have to do it? Okay. All right. I'll tell you what. Why don't you just wait? If you wouldn't... If you could just hang up and then call back when I call the next item, I'll make sure we give some time to make sure you get back on the line.
Okay. That sounds good.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Deal announced.
I will. I promise. And then I'll wait.
All right, thank you.
Because I recognize the technology. This is the world we get to live in right now. I'll make sure we take care of that. All right.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Hi. Are you calling on the consent calendar?
This is Dorothy Kraus, Mayor, and I'm wondering if I could speak to matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda.
You can if you call back on the next item, which is the non-agenda. Even though that's fine. We'll just...
No, that's okay. I'll call back.
Okay.
That's not a problem.
Thanks, Dorothy.
Bye-bye.
All right, bye-bye. Hi. Are you calling on the consent calendar?
Hi. I was calling to make comments about the signs on Balboa Island.
Got it. Okay. So right now, we're on consent calendar. If you wouldn't mind hanging up and then just listening for us to call the next item, which is the public comments on non-agenda items, we'll make sure we get you on as soon as you call back.
So when they announce that, we call again?
Yeah, I will announce that. So... And I'll make sure that I give you a little bit of time, because I know there's about a 30-second delay between...
Okay. I'll call back.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
Bye.
That was the last one. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Hi. Are you calling about the consent calendar?
Hello?
Hi. Yeah, are you calling about the consent calendar?
I am.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
I'm calling about the Balboa Island walkways and the signs on the...
Oh, hang on. That's not quite the consent calendar. So sorry. Right now, we're just dealing with a specific item that we call our consent calendar. The next item up is actually going to be the public comments on non-agenda items. So as soon as the system hangs up, just listen for the next item and then call in, and we'll make sure we get you on, okay?
Okay.
Awesome.
So we're watching live, so we'll just wait, and we'll call again when we see the appropriate time.
Yeah, it'll be very soon, I promise. We're just going to... We're going to vote as soon as...
Okay.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Oh, man. I'm looking forward to getting in person again.
Yeah, I was just thinking.
All right. Anyway. All right. Let's bring it back. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Sorry. There is no second?
Oh, there wasn't a second? All right. We'll go second by Mr. Muldoon. Yes? Okay. Cool. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item 3, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach granting the 2020 non-exclusive franchise agreements for commercial solid waste and vertebral materials handling services within the city of Newport Beach. The motion carries unanimously 7-0.
Great. All right. So we will go ahead and move into the next item, which is public comments on non-agenda items. So if you are listening live and would like to call in on this item, go ahead. Sorry about that. And then, do we have any public comments on non-agenda items from the community room first?
Good evening. I'm Hua Yan Yip. My public comment has two parts. The second part is a video, so I hope the speaker will be working. September is coastal cleanup month, and I think everybody knows that part of the new normal is just a lot of this, plastic trash everywhere. You probably also heard from staff about this, too. And when it starts to rain, that'll be a real problem for us. You know that, too. Some people say we should organize a cleanup by council members, so you will get to see firsthand how much worse this got. So I would just say, maybe we can all join staff for cleanup. It will be fun. It's actually really fun. Eight months ago, the Water Quality Committee sent a trash and a toxins reduction ordinance to city attorney. That was a result of our continuous research and discussions since 2017. Our goal has always been clear that it must be a win-win for all. So even though this only costs pennies, we want our restaurant to have a little gain. However, the political well was only inching forward on a zigzag pattern. So it has been quite a while. Do we deserve an answer from council what your plan really is? For now, I would like to show the YouTube. Thank you.
Who doesn't love takeout food? It's convenient, easy, most of the time delicious. But with every order, there's just a lot of stuff that comes with the meal. Look, here's what I got when I ordered Thai. This is for my breakfast this morning. And this is all the stuff you get with one of those meal delivery kits. Some of it you can recycle. Some of it is compostable. But a lot of it, well, I really don't know. And all this waste, it isn't just a problem we can solve with recycling alone. These little containers and wrappers may not seem like a big deal, but in the U.S., packaging makes up the largest category of municipal waste. On top of that, single-use items make up another 10% of all our discards. And this kind of mindless consumption has a really big impact on climate change. Roughly 29% of our nation's greenhouse gas emissions come from the way we make, consume, and dispose of stuff. That's more than the emissions that come from heating our homes or driving around in our cars. It takes a lot of energy and resources to produce single-use items. These things we use only for a few minutes or even a few seconds before they become trash. And when single-use items go into a landfill, all that paper and plastic is destroyed. And so, we have to go out there and...
Great. Thank you. If you'd like us to see the rest, you can certainly send us the link. All right. Any other public comment in the community room? All right. We'll go back to the phones. Hopefully, we've got at least three. Okay, good. All right. Hi. So please mute what you're listening to, and then go ahead.
My name is Stephanie Riggs.
Okay.
And I'm just calling to voice my opinion about the signage coming down on Balboa Island. I just feel like it's only a 1.2% positive rate, and I just think it's not crowded anymore. And honestly, I just miss seeing people's faces. I feel like if people want to wear masks, then great. But anyway, I just want the island back. And then it does... I don't know. It does concern me that there's a garage sale coming up, too. But anyway, I just feel like there's not any other neighborhoods restricted, and I just feel like it's time to be able to get the island back. So anyway, thank you for listening.
All right. Thank you. All right, thank you. Who are the next speaker? Hi, go ahead.
Hi, Mayor O'Neill and council members. This is Dorothy Kraus, calling. I'm calling regarding matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda.
Yes, go ahead.
Specifically, I'm calling in about consideration of putting opposing or supporting propositions as requested by you, the mayor, and council members Dixon and Muldoon on a future agenda. I am deeply concerned that we're using taxpayer dollars to what looks like advancing a personal political agenda. And I say this with all due respect to all of you. But frankly, I'm very surprised by this and disappointed that some of you council members who support placing these two propositions on a future agenda, is this illegal? So I just want to say I oppose and do not support the city taking a position on these two propositions or any proposition. Please don't go down this path. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll go to the next speaker. Hi, so make sure you mute what you're listening to and then go ahead.
Hi, yes, this is Doyle Borden, once again. And this is in regards to the signs.
Yep, go ahead.
On Balboa Island, okay, great, I heard some feedback, so. Anyway, so I would ask that you guys have them taken down, for many different reasons, but number one, they're useless. We have so many people that use both sides anyway, it's pretty much unenforceable. And it actually is ugly. The signs are ugly. It takes away from the beauty and the magic of this area. And when you have all the side streets, even Marine Avenue, and the sidewalks are significantly smaller and people are walking both ways, it doesn't really even make sense to try to do it on the other as well, on the main oceanfront. So my request would be if you guys would take those down, I think it would make the, the place a little bit nicer. And I, like the previous caller said, I enjoy watching the smiling faces of people as we all enjoy the island. So thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please. Hi, go ahead.
Hi.
Hi, yep, go ahead.
I'm watching, hi, I'm watching live, but I was supposed to mute it if I'm on. So should I mute it, or?
Yes, please.
Hello?
Hi, yeah, so mute what you're watching, and then when you're ready, go ahead.
Hello?
Hi, yep, go ahead. Can you hear me?
Hi.
Hi, yes, go ahead.
Okay, hi. I'm a, I'm a longtime Balboa Island resident, and I own my home. My husband and I and our family, we raised our kids here. I'm just calling to support the taking down the signs from the city on the bayfront. And I have quite a few reasons, but mainly, where I live, I am forced to go down an alley to get home from Marine, and it's a persnickety spot, and I have a very busy alley, and, and a narrow boardwalk. And so the way that the signs have gone, so I've complied, and it's fine, and I understand. But mainly, my alley's busy, but I think now might be a very good time for the signs to come down and to give people the, I don't know the right word, but the opportunity to just be as courteous as we all have been, and there's fewer visitors on the island. And I think we can all live without the intrusive, you know, to buy whatever they are wrong ways and so on. On the lamp posts, at least, I can see the city wanting to put them maybe where the boardwalk hit, the alleys hit the boardwalk, because they always seem to navigate their traffic that way. But for some reason during COVID, they wanted to stick them on every sign, on every, excuse me, on every lamp post. But also mainly, that's my personal thing, but I also think just as a higher level view is, I believe that people are respectively, you know, keeping distance from one another, and people are polite. And I think people stand aside and say hello through their paths, and they move, they're courteous to one another. So I don't think that this big, bold command is necessary anymore. So as somebody that grew up here, owns here, knows everybody and loves everybody here, I believe that Balboa Island doesn't need to be isolated and held out to this standard anymore. We need to kind of go with Coronamar and the peninsula and every place else that has all the visitors and people that are doing their thing and complying. And we need to revisit this, this mandatory obedience of doing this. I just don't think it's necessary anymore. So anyway, that's all I really had to say. So thanks for listening. I appreciate all the time you guys all put in, and I appreciate you allowing us, as Balboa Islanders, to call in and have a voice. So that's all I really wanted to say. Thank you so much.
Sounds good, thank you. Any others? Okay, next speaker. Hi, go ahead.
Hi there, I am calling from Balboa Island, and I am also calling in regard to the one-way sign. I have an issue with their safety, number one. Several of us have to walk down the alleys and dodge cars to get home, and I think that's not what people are, 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 would, would want. And I think it's emboldened people to shame people just trying to get home. I've seen people shamed in a wheelchair. I've seen people shamed in walkers just trying to take a walk or get to their house. I think it's unfair. I think it's time that they come down. I think the numbers have come down enough. I think we've all put up with enough. Mostly, that's all I wanted to say, and I hope, I really hope you consider taking them down. It's been enough. We all complied for a very long time. We all did our part. And I, I think it's run its course, and we're ready to have the walkways back to normal. So thank you so much for taking my call, and I really, really hope you take the signs down. Thank you so much.
Thank you. One more? Okay. Hi, go ahead.
Hi, my name is John Larson. I've lived here since 1980, so I'm somewhat of a newbie, but I walk about five miles a day. And I would appreciate it if the council would look into electric bikes on the sidewalks. There's a lot of kids under the age of probably twelve that are speeding down the sidewalk, and eventually, I think someone's going to get hurt. But I love the city. I love everything you guys are doing. I know it's a hard job, and I just wanted to make you aware of it. So thank you, and good night.
Thank you. All right, bring it back up. We're moving to item number fourteen, which is public hearing ordinances numbers twenty-twenty dash twenty-two and twenty-twenty dash twenty-three, Newport Airport Village Plan Community Development Plan. Speaking of, we ought to do a short staff presentation on this one.
Thank you, Mayor. Jim Campbell, Deputy Director, Community Development Department. I'll be doing a quick overview of the project. If there's any additional questions that I can't fill, we've got David Blumenthal, our contract planner, as well as Simone Juerges here to assist me. So we've got a presentation ready to go. Well, first of all, this is the Newport Airport Village project. These are legislative amendments to the general plan and to the creating a planned community text and to change the zoning of the property. You saw this project first back on July twenty-eighth, where you were asked to adopt a resolution providing notice to the Airport Land Use Commission of possibility to override their decision of calling this project inconsistent with their plan. So that was the first time you saw this project. So this is the, the second time, and we'll have one additional visit here in two weeks. So up on the screen is the project site, the vicinity map. It's up at MacArthur and campus, right near the airport area. So this is a closer view. So we have campus to the north, and MacArthur is the main thoroughfare on the right-hand side of your screen. So the area that's in yellow is the project site area. It's currently developed with restaurants, office uses, car rental facilities, and the like. Now, the, the general plan right now is airport office, and the request is to change it to mixed-use horizontal. And that, that is the general plan amendment here. And so this is an existing designation that the general plan has. Within that designation, the general plan currently provides an allocation of up to twenty-two hundred units for the airport area. And this amendment is just going to simply tap into that existing allocation that's in the general plan. And so with approval of this general plan amendment, again, you'll be asked to take that action at the next meeting. But, you know, we would not be increasing the developable residential units in the airport area, so there would be no increases and no charter vote. Two items that have note today, we will be asking the council, not tonight, but at the next meeting, to waive a general plan policy regarding the density of the overall site. And that would be justifiable pursuant to, this is a density bonus project. Additionally, we would be asking the City Council to waive a park dedication requirement. That's a policy of the general plan, but that would come with an in-lu fee payment, and I'll get into that momentarily. The zoning of the property is office-airport, and we'd be rezoning it to planned community text. And then we would also adopt a new planned community development regulations. This would act as a zoning of the property. It would provide the development standards for the future development of the site, permitted uses, and the like. And I'll be summarizing that here momentarily. But what's not before you today is an actual project. Again, this is just the legislative amendments to the general plan and the zoning. The other action that'll be before you, the City Council, is the development agreement. You know, the airport area requires a development agreement pursuant to the general plan policy and the municipal code. And that development agreement would provide the vested rights to proceed with the project, and I'll describe it momentarily. And within that agreement, there are also some public benefits to the community simply with the payment of certain fees. All right, so again, as, as I said, it's a legislative approval only. The overall density of the project will be up to four-hundred-and-forty-four dwelling units in the planning area. That's the furthest away from the airport area, and I'll show you that map in a moment. So we have three-hundred-and-twenty-nine base units within the general plan, and the applicant is requesting up to a hundred-and-fifteen units for density bonus. And with that would become the provision that they build affordable housing units within the project site. Additionally, the planned community text would also regulate the development of commercial areas in the project site if it were mixed-use, but adjacent as well. Let's go ahead and show the project site. So this is the, what the general plan map would look like with approval of the project. Would be taking that area outlined in blue and changing it to mixed-use horizontal. It's currently that COG that you see, that yellow, orange color. Now, of note is that sixty-five CNEL contour running right straight through the project site. And so to the left-hand side of this diagram is closer to the airport, and it's a higher noise area, and residential use would not be allowed within that area. All right, moving forward, back to the general plan amendment, so that we create a new anomaly in the general plan. Mixed-use residential, mixed-use H2 is the designation. It establishes the development limit of two-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-two square feet and three-hundred-and-twenty-nine dwelling units. Now, that does not include the density bonus units. Now, the table, that, the second table that you see here is really kind of a breakdown of all the residential units that the general plan currently allows in the airport area, which is twenty-two hundred units. And so we've got the, the total units there on the, on the fourth column over of twenty-two hundred units within that designation. With approval of this project, there would still be four-hundred-and-thirty units left to be built within the current allocation of the general plan. So what I, what I like to say about this project is we're really just changing the color on the map from orange to the salmon color there, but we're just applying the same policies and a new set of development regulations to build the housing that the general plan currently allocates. All right, so moving forward, as I mentioned, there was two issues with the general plan. We have one policy, six, fifteen, seven, that talks about the overall density of housing types. And, and because this is a, our general plan would basically require a more dense project site here. And so because this is a density bonus project, the thinking is, is that if we require that higher density, it would actually make it infeasible to build, and we really don't want to apply a development standard. It would make an affordable housing project infeasible. So pursuant to density bonus regulations of our municipal code and state density bonus law, we would grant, we could grant that waiver if the general plan amendment is, is approved.
Can I stop you there? Because I was, I was reading through, so this is on page fourteen dash six, if anyone would actually like to read along. But there's a, there's a discussion in there that I thought was kind of interesting, because, yeah, I understand the concept of needing a waiver as part of this process, but realistically, we're looking at this and realizing that because of the way that the, because of the way that the, the sound barrier works, you, the point made here is that, you know, you're cutting up, first off, you're cutting into plant, planning area one instead of just the whole project. So if you're only looking at planning area one, the point made in this is that it's seven-point-one-four acres, to which construction of three-hundred-and-twenty-nine units would have an effective density of forty-six units per acre, which wouldn't require a, a density, or, I'm sorry, a waiver in that situation. And then your, your other point, because of the density bonus situation, the four-hundred-and-ninety-three units would result in an effective density of sixty-nine units per acre, which would actually exceed the, the density discussion. And I was noting in my, at least my head, I apologize, because I mentioned the sound, the, the airport area issue. I, I meant to say, because it's split into area one and area two, and area one's the only one that can allow for the, the housing, that you're actually, you're actually looking at it and saying, well, now two-thirds of that area one is buildable, so we're really talking about a much denser project, which I don't, it doesn't bother me for this area. I think, I think one of the themes that I've been going to hear repeatedly out of the, all of this is, this is the area where everyone kind of wants. If we're going to have to build houses toward Rena, this is where everyone wants it anyway. But it's just an, it was an interesting, it was an interesting thing, because when I was working through the, the waiver process, I understood legally why we had to do it, but practically speaking, we're, you know, we are seeing a much denser project than, than even, you know, than realistically, realistically, we're seeing a denser project certainly than what we would have to waive. I just, I found that kind of interesting, that, that the way that our code. Let me back up for a second. The reason I find that interesting is because constantly when we're hearing from the state, and they're saying, hey, just build, it's one of those things where you kind of, you, this, this HCD says build, and then another agency says, but not here, right? And that, that came up when I was reading through the, the response letter we received from both the Airport Commission, I'm not going to find it, the Airport Commission, and also another state agency, which one was that? It was.
That was.
The Department of Transportation.
Yes.
Yeah. So you're just going to sit there, and as yet, I, I mean, I didn't even think of the Department of Transportation when I was thinking of Rena. Like, you think of California Coastal Commission, you think of FEMA, you think of, you know, other agencies. I never thought that the Department of Transportation would jump in and tell us, don't, yeah, don't build housing here. I mean, it's just one more agency that is in conflict with HCD that I would just remind everyone in Newport, this is, this is what we're up against when we're trying to find housing.
Yes, the Caltrans does get involved with airports in, in the proximity of housing. Again, we're, we're, we're going to the Airport Land Use Commission, and Caltrans gets involved because of the proximity to the airport. And it's just a way for, you know, the airport operator and, and Caltrans to provide feedback to the City Council as to the appropriateness in their mind of putting housing here. And so all the rules that we're working under are there, and I think they all predated the housing crisis. And I don't think the thinking of maybe lightening up on some of those comments, it hasn't quite trickled down to the, to the staff members who were reviewing these.
Or it ever will, frankly. I mean, it's, they're, they're not tasked with building new housing, to be fair. We've got a couple of council members. Ms. Dixon?
Oh, thank you. Could you go back to the slide you were on when we stopped? That one?
Sure.
Okay, a couple of things. So maybe this is kind of a follow-up to the mayor's point. So our general plan requires a minimum of four-ninety-three. So our general plan requires a minimum of 493, and so you're saying that's too dense?
Well, yes. So our general plan is, the, the interplay of these policies is very complicated. It requires a minimum 30 dwelling units per acre and a maximum of 50 dwelling units per acre over the entire residential village, and it's both planning areas when you look at it. So I'm gonna go to, I'm gonna flip forward here real quick to the two planning areas that were referenced before. Uh, so we've got a residential planning area, planning area one, and planning area two is, is only commercial because of the noise. And so our general plan basically says you have to have a minimum of 30 dwelling units per acre for that entire area, um, and/or a maximum of 50 dwelling units per acre. So if you took that minimum density and applied it only to planning area one, you get a project that's actually denser than what the general plan really envisioned, cause we're in essence packing it all into one area. Um, and, and, and so the general plan actually envisions projects that would actually fit right within that 30 to 50 density range, and having it be that.
So you would never anticipate a project that would extend over two planning areas?
Um, the planning areas were created purposefully to keep the residential units away from the safety zone, which is also a line right there. It's a vertical line, safety zone three, and it would keep the residential units away from the 65 CNEL.
But now you've approved that, and that's why you, you're allowing residential units inside the safety zone?
Um, it actually, the, the planned community text does not allow for residential units in safety zone three. It allows it within a broader safety zone, which is safety zone six, which covers the entire area. Now, residential uses are allowed in safety zone six pursuant to the airport land use plan. Uh, they're not really allowed in, especially, uh, they're not, dense residential is not allowed in safety zone three. And so in deference to the airport environs land use plan, we, we crafted the planned community text to not put residential in safety zone three.
Okay, but ALAC opposes this.
Yes, they do. Um, the project, in our opinion, is consistent with the airport land use plan, um, because residential use is allowed in the, uh, areas below 65 CNEL, which this does, uh, it does not put residential units within the 65, so it's consistent in that regard. Um, it also doesn't put residential units in the safety zone three. Um, and so in those two regards, it's consistent with the airport land use plan. Additionally, we provide notification to future residents physically onsite and in their, their deeds, uh, I'm sorry, in their, their rental agreements. So again, the, the, the regulations in the planned community text also make this project consistent with the, the written plan that they have. Now, the Airport Land Use Commission has found it inconsistent, and I think that's within their prerogative, but.
What was the consequence of that?
Well, then that sets us down a path to potentially override it. And so if, if the council chooses to approve this project, you then have to come back and provide the notice of intent to override, which you did back on two, um, in July 28th. And there's a 45-day period of time within which the Airport Land Use Commission and Caltrans can provide comments, and, and they already have, and they're in your packet. And again, they're reiterating their concerns that they would rather not see this project this close to the airport, if you will. I'm paraphrasing obviously on that.
So if we do approve it, then what happens?
Well, uh, two things happen. You have a, a project that's approved, and you would all, you would have to override that decision by a two-thirds, is it two-thirds vote? It's a two-thirds vote of the city council. Um, so in that respect, it requires a, a, a higher consensus if the council wants to proceed forward with this. There's also talk about transferring liability if there's ever any issue related to safety of, say, an airplane were to crash into this area.
What do you mean, talk? I mean, is, is that what they legally are required to do is assign liability?
Well, that's what their plan says. The Airport Land Use Plan says if you do an override, then you actually then transfer the liability back onto the city. And I think, uh, if, I would rather have Aaron maybe take this particular question and, and take it to its conclusion.
So, so what the law says is that basically, uh, it excludes certain people from having liability based on override. It does not assign liability to the city. And if legislator wanted to assign liability to the city, they could have expressly done so. The fact that they didn't, uh, shows that it doesn't transfer to the city of Newport Beach. On top of that, there's several government code provisions which provide immunity to the, to the city for decisions like you would be making, uh, in that context to override that decision. So there's no liability transferred to the city.
So if some future resident wants to sue the airport, they can't sue the airport for some noise, I didn't know, they just, they didn't tell me it was going to be this close to the airport, whatever. And so we, the city will not be held liable in any way because we approved this project?
That's right.
Okay. All right. I, if you would please go back to where you were on the slide.
All right. Um, so we've, we've.
This slide?
This particular slide, yes.
Okay. Another question I have is on the, uh, when I read in the staff report, the, uh, in-lu park fee, which is fine, I understand the in-lu concept, but apparently the fee assessment or the value of the land that, uh, is being assessed at 2007 valued? And so hasn't the marketplace changed since 2007? And why haven't we upgraded our assessment models?
Um, you, you are correct that the, uh, the, the last time this, the fee was set by the city council was 2007, based upon some appraisals that were done at that time. And we've obviously gone through the great recession, and so, uh, land values did diminish over time, and we did not update it during that time period. Uh, we have worked on updating this fee. We had anticipated bringing that back to the city council early next year.
Well, do you have, have you done a study to what the land values are now today in 2020 on this property?
Well, the appraisals were done probably six to eight months ago, pre-COVID, so I don't know if there is any effect there, but, uh, we have those appraisals ready. Uh, we have the methodology, with very similar methodology to do the appraisals that was done back in.
But you know the appraisal value of that property now?
Of this property? I do not know. We didn't do an appraisal of this property. We did an appraisal of, of other properties in town, you know, that would, you would necessarily dedicate for the park, find out what the value of that is. We took three appraisals.
All right, so there, you have updated formula, but you did not apply it to this project?
No, we haven't applied it here. We wanted to bring that forward to the city council for adoption of a new fee at, at a later point. It's just not ready to bring to, towards you yet.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Hurt, I'm sorry, you've got two more now. Mr. Hurtman?
Uh, Jim, I'm gonna ask a question for those out there in the community, uh, who I, I think will want to know the answer to this question. Why now on this, rather than addressing this through the general plan update process?
Why now? Well, the, the applicant is asking for the city council's consideration, this application. We don't delay project applications pending an amendment that we might be doing. Um, I think it would be up to the, the council, if they didn't feel comfortable approving this project, they could delay and wait for, say, the, the housing element, uh, update to come forward. But I, I think this project provides an opportunity, what we create a housing opportunity site that we can take credit for in our upcoming housing.
Okay. You s-, you said there was not a project that came along with it, though?
No, this is just a legislative amendment to the general plan and to the zoning, to create the planned community text, and then the development agreement as well, which is an ordinance.
Okay.
But there is no actual building before you today.
And, uh, Mr. Avery?
Thank you. What, what were Caltrans injections?
David, could you summarize that for me? I did not have a chance to read the full Caltrans letter, but they're, 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 it's the same as the airport. So, um, there, there's, they have a safety concern, they're concerned about future residents subject to noise, um, you know, they don't want residential this close to the airport either, you know, if.
Not a traffic concern?
No, not a traffic concern, no.
Interesting. And then in terms of the housing element update, in your view, just sort of generally, um, sort of, obviously, we're looking at this area pretty hard for housing. And do you think this project is within what you'd expect we'd ultimately wind up with as fitting in an update?
Uh, yes. I, I think we have a willing property owner who wants to put housing on this site. You know, it's consistent with the Airport Land Use Plan, despite what the Airport Land Use Commission said. Does require these legislative amendments, and so we can take credit for this to count towards our, uh, 4,334, uh, Rena allocation that is coming forward. Um, now, again, the majority of this project site would not be affordable. Um, the applicant is going to do 5% of 329 units as, as affordable. Now, that percentage might go up. It's not as much affordable units as I think we're gonna need to see in future projects, but we haven't established the housing element update yet. We don't know what those policies will look like, and so I think we need to look at it under the density bonus provisions, um, today. And so, um, again, this is a housing opportunity site that was just handed to us, and I think we might wanna take advantage of that, cause we have such a very high Rena. We may struggle finding enough sites, uh, throughout the airport area, uh, given the definitions, uh, that HCD is using, um, and the state housing element law. So, um, I think, I think we probably need almost every site we can get.
So doing it now, do we get some sort of credit for it, or is it just, uh, a start on our Rena number?
It, it's a start. So it's, uh, 329 units for sure, and it can be as many as 444, depending upon how many density bonus units they have. So the developer will be able to build, um, uh, so it's 329, and then of that, there will be, uh, like, 17 units that are in the affordable range. And so those numbers will be carried forward into our housing element, and we'll take credit for it.
They all count toward our 4,800 deficit?
They will count. Yes, they will.
Thank you.
Ms. Berner?
So does this owner bringing this forward to us now and getting us to approve it now mean that they may not have to put as many affordable units in this as if they waited and it went through the housing element update committee?
Um, the, I would have to speculate as to what the future housing element policy would be. Um, you know, are we gonna come up with a different housing scheme, more density, uh, more affordable units? I, I just don't know. So I can't answer the question without speculating.
All right. Go ahead.
Okay, so.
You know, actually, I'm sorry, I had one other question, um, since we're still on the Rena topic. The only, the only question I had, and this might be an Aaron question, um, so Rena cycles are eight years long. Um, the development agreement itself is 15 years long. Does that 15-year development agreement cause any issue with counting this toward Rena? I would, I would think not, but I just wanna, I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm thinking that through, cause that, cause Rena, Rena does play a factor in our discussions and, you know, most future projects, I'm guessing. But I wanna make sure I'm, you know, I saw that, and I figured I didn't wanna skip over that on a technicality issue unless I'm.
So it does give them a vested right to basically build it under the current rules. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to Simone, though, cause he's much more apt at the, at the Rena and how they get the credits for it, so, or, or Jim.
Um, so the development agreement has, uh, two different terms. The residential component has a 10-year lifespan, and then the commercial component has 15-year lifespan. Um, and so they would have the vested right to produce that housing up until that point. So they could build at any time between now and that 10-year period. We, we intend to include it in the housing element, even though that's an eight-year planning cycle, starting after, uh, October of 2021. We feel that it will be built, 15 to 20?
15 for residential.
15 for residential. Well, I apologize, thank you for the correction. Uh, it's 15 years for residential and 20 for the, um, um, non-residential. Um, but we, we, we believe that it will come online within that period. We have substantial evidence, we feel this site would meet the test under, uh, state guidance and under state housing element law. It, it is possible that it might not get built within that time period, and we wouldn't actually have construction credit, but we do feel we have credit in the housing element for planning for those 4,834 units.
Okay. I thought, I thought as much, but like I said, it's worth the ask now. All right, let's, let's go ahead.
All right. Um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna touch on the neighborhood park standard. Um, so this, this policy requires that, uh, at least a one-acre park be developed in project sites. The policy also allows the council to waive that dedication requirement if the payment of an in-lu fee is, and I know we spoke about what the value of that would be. Um, you know, staff and the planning commissioner are recommending that we waive the, uh, the dedication requirement in this case because of the proximity to the airport. Now, there will be recreational opportunities designed into the future project, um, and that's part of the planned community text there, and so we feel it's appropriate. And it is a $2.5 million, uh, park dedication fee for a one acre that would be paid. So if that was the action taken, it's consistent with the general plan policy. Um, moving forward, the, the planned community text that I've spoken to, uh, again, we're gonna change the zoning of the property from office airport, that, uh, orange color that you see, to planned community text. And then there is a very detailed, uh, planned community set, uh, document regulations and, um, design considerations as well. And that establishes the, um, permitted uses that would be allowed in planning area one and planning area two. As I said earlier, the residential units are confined to planning area one, and they also would not be allowed in, in that 65 CNEL. And so that, you can see a portion of planning area one that's in the 65 CNEL, and that would only be for parking areas or, or other areas, but not for, uh, you know, amenities for the project site, but not for, um, residential units. Planning area two is exclusively commercial. Uh, so this is the, excuse me, I'll get to the development agreement in a moment. This is the conceptual plan that the applicant has provided. Um, again, the planning area one is that orange building, uh, with the green space around it, and that would be a residential building. The red that you see there might be a commercial mixed-use component right there on MacArthur Boulevard. It's not a mandatory component, but that is something that they would have the flexibility to do. And, um, you see the, the parking lots and the purple buildings, those would be future office development, um, or commercial uses consistent with the planned community text, um, you know, as the, um, the car rental agency lots when their leases expire. Now, the applicant can talk to you a little bit more about that, and they do have a presentation coming up, and so I'll, I'll move forward on to, um, the next part of the presentation. The development agreement, 15 years for residential, 20 years for non-residential. And so these are the public benefits that would be provided, aside from building housing that we so desperately need. Um, so we have a public benefit fee of $6 million, and now, two, that's structured payments. So 2 million would be paid within 30 days of approval, uh, 2 million would be paid at the permit issuance for a building permit, and 2 million would be paid at occupancy. Uh, the park-in-lu fee would be paid in half, uh, at permit issuance and half at occupancy, and that's the 2.5 million park-in-lu fee. And then there's a public safety fee that, that staff negotiated with the applicant, and this would be for, um, you know, fire services or police services, and that would be 100% due at permit issuance for a total of $9.5 million. And so that's the value of the agreement to the city, in addition to providing obviously the, the housing and the affordable housing.
All right, just a moment. Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, could you go back to the prior slide just for one second? Is, is this the green, is that green space? Where it's green, is that green space?
Yeah, this is a conceptual site plan, so I can, uh,
Right.
There really is no plan, uh, developed beyond this, and so, yes, those would be some outdoor, uh, spaces that folks who are working in those office buildings could come out and enjoy, maybe on their lunch hour and what have you.
Because it's called a village. I just wanted to get the understanding of what the village is.
So there are provisions in the planned community text that actually kind of connect these two projects together, and so, you know, people will have the opportunity to, to kind of walk through these areas and maybe enjoy those, uh, open spaces.
Okay. Could you go to the next slide? I just have a few questions on the development agreement. So what is typically, when we do development agreements, what is the, uh, term? Is it usually 10 years? Have we ever gone over 10 years?
I think we've done terms that are longer than that, but again, we, we spoke with the applicant in the negotiations, and we felt that that was an appropriate, uh, term, you know, given, you know, uncertainty of COVID and, and the housing market. So, you know, we, we could go more or less.
I don't understand this, uncertainty of the housing market when there is, according to the governor, 3.5 million short, million housing use, unit shortage, and we have to identify 4,982 or whatever the number is. So where's the, where's the lack of housing demand?
Well, as, as you're aware, the, the Rena numbers are, for us, are 4,832 out of 1.3 Well, as you're aware, the RENA numbers are, for us, are 4,832 out of 1.3 million for the entire SCAG region, all the six counties here.
So, we know housing is going to need to be identified and built. I think that's fine. I think we need to plan. This is a plan that will help get us there. I'm just trying to understand the concept of 15 years versus 10 years. And so, will it even satisfy our housing requirements in 15 years?
Well, I would say that our housing needs are probably going to continue longer than this planning period.
Well, I mean, in terms of the RENA demand.
We will have a seventh cycle of the RENA that will be identified.
But will not be part of the next cycle, is that what you're saying?
Well, at this point in time, no. We've got our RENA for this planning cycle for this upcoming eight years, and it's the 4,832.
But these numbers don't apply to the 4,900?
The numbers that we would be approving with this project would. We would take credit for what this project would be in the upcoming housing element update. We would.
Are you certain about that, 100%?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, if it's not built within that time period, but it's still within this development agreement term, you know, the general plan would allow for residential, and it could become another housing opportunity site in a future RENA as well.
Well, wait a minute. If we go forward with our housing element and these figures, these units are included as part of meeting our RENA requirement, and then they're not built, what does that mean? We just have to identify them. We don't have to build them.
Exactly. The regional housing needs assessment, the RENA, is really a planning target, planning goal. Of that 4,800 units, we have about 75% of them that need to be below market, so low and very low and moderate income housing. And so, that's our planning target for this year, for this upcoming cycle. We don't have to construct them. And if this site is a housing opportunity site in the upcoming RENA, and we intend to include it, and if it's not constructed during that time period, under the way currently the law, it wouldn't penalize us at all for that. And so, you know, again, if that site would qualify as a future site, we would put it into the next RENA, and we don't know what that next RENA would be, and then obviously it's a separate process.
I wonder if the state would let us do that if it hasn't been built, whether we continue to. But that's for others to determine. The park in-lug fee that I brought up a moment ago, at some point in time, maybe if this goes forward tonight, I would like to know what the value of the property is, so to know that we are not receiving that value as far as the city.
So, you're looking for the value of this property? I think the applicant has a presentation after mine, and that might be a good question for you to ask them.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, development agreement. So, moving forward quickly, California Environmental Quality Act. So, in your packet, we've been asked, we will ask you to approve an addendum to two EIRs. One of them is the 2006 General Plan Update EIR, which is when we evaluated the impacts of the current general plan. And so, this project stacks up very well with that. There is no increase in housing with this, because again, we're tapping into the existing housing that the general plan actually already allows. Now, the adopted general plan actually has less development than what was studied in that 2006 EIR. We actually studied closer to 4,000 units and more non-residential development. The actual plan came out less than what we evaluated in the EIR. And that's actually fairly common to do it that way. And so, when we looked at that EIR and stacked it up against this project, there were really no additional impacts that weren't already identified in that prior EIR that are mitigated through application of all the policies in the general plan. And we also looked at the 2014 Land Use Element Supplemental EIR. So, this was the Measure Y project that went forward in 2014. We did an EIR for that project. This project was included in that analysis specifically.
I thought it was pulled out.
Well, it was in the analysis for the EIR, and as we all know, Measure Y did fail at the vote, so the amendment never went forward. But the analysis in that EIR is still valid, and it was a certified EIR. And so, we're using that document. It was an expensive document that the city prepared for that, and we want to use that information to make decisions today. And so, when we looked at both of these EIRs, the difference in the 2014 project was that they were actually adding the units to the general plan above and beyond what's already in the general plan today. We're not doing that. And so, when you look at these two EIRs, you know, they didn't find any significant environmental effects as a result of this. And so, and when we look at this project, it actually is less development than what was previously studied. And that's really the point of doing an addendum. It allows you to move forward utilizing that information. There really isn't any new impacts identified. There's no significant new information that would cause us to stop and go back and redo the environmental analysis. And so, I think that bodes well for the project in that it falls within all the analytical parameters of our general plan and the environmental impact analysis by these two EIRs. Any questions about that? All right, so back to the Airport Environments Land Use Plan. Again, we've spoken about this, but this is a more detailed graphic. Residential will be allowed in the crosshatched area, but only non-residential or parking would be allowed in the area that's just in the yellow color. Again, we're purposefully avoiding Safety Zone 3 and the 65 DB CNEL. That's how the planned community text, the zoning document, that we'll be asking you to adopt at the next meeting. All right, so moving forward here, we're, so the Airport Land Use Commission, they did conduct a public hearing. They did find it inconsistent for safety, noise, compatibility. We spoke about this. They also were concerned about building height. There was an unresolved issue about FAA clearance on one of the planning areas, which has been subsequently resolved. And now, the planned community text has been modified so that it's consistent with the FAA's recommendations. So, we're also avoiding any issues there. So, again, the project benefits, redeveloping the project site, we're creating a housing opportunity site, as we've discussed, and we've got the payment of those public benefit fees that were noted in the development agreement slide. So, this is a very short timeframe for where this project started. Again, when the applicant gets up, he's going to talk about the fact that this has been in the works for well over a decade. But again, in terms of recent time periods, the planning commission did their study session back in April. They took a public hearing in June. The planning commission is recommending approval of the documents, an approval of the planned community texts, and ultimately, approval of the project. The Airport Land Use Commission held their hearing in July, again, found it inconsistent, and we came back to you in late July for that notice of intent to override. It's a procedural requirement by state law. And there's that 45-day comment period. Now, we have the comments from both the Airport Land Use Commission and Caltrans. They're in your packet here. They just kind of reaffirm what the Airport Land Use Commission had previously indicated. And tonight, we're here ahead of a potential adoption of the project back in September of 20, I'm sorry, September 22nd. So, the city council can't take any actions to override the Airport Land Use Commission and approve the project until after September 13th, which again, that pushes it to the next meeting. So, we're here tonight simply asking the council to do three things. Is adopt the resolution that adopts the addendums, the environmental review for the project. We also are asking the city council to introduce the ordinances. There's two ordinances. One is to change the zoning to planned community text and also adopts that Planned Community Development Plan Regulations, the zoning regulations. And the other ordinance is for the development agreement itself, is to introduce that. And we would then come back on September 22nd and then take all the final actions. And that would be the general plan amendment resolution, the adoption of those two ordinances, and then the adoption of a resolution actually overriding the Airport Land Use Commission. So, we can't take that action tonight, but we're preparing to take that action on September 22nd. And again, we want to conduct a public hearing, approve the addendum, and introduce those ordinances, and then we come back in two weeks and take all the final actions. And so, tonight's actions, you know, obviously set the stage for those final actions in two weeks. And again, we want to take that public hearing, and then we'll go from there. Are there any questions?
Mr. Avery.
Yeah, the Airport Land Use Commission basically denies most of these types of projects in the airport, in their sphere near the airport.
With significant residential projects, yes, they do.
Yeah. And this is going to be five stories?
It's going to be 85 feet high, so the residential component will be 85 feet high.
And is that around five stories?
You could do five to six in that.
And that's what Uptown Newport was as well, right?
Yes. Uptown Newport has portions of it that are actually taller than that, and they're further away from the airport. And the Airport Land Use Commission did find that project inconsistent, and the council previously override.
Right.
And that we have that project under construction today.
But looking forward, that's sort of the trend in terms of development, is that sort of height. We don't think we're going to be doing anything 13 stories or anything.
Probably not. It's really up to the community and the council ultimately in their actions. Now, there is a height limitation in the airport area of basically 150 feet. There is an easement above that that the county holds, and so, you really can't penetrate that 150 feet above the ground. So, this is going to be well below that.
Okay. And then, the timeline that they've got, is that to let some of those leases run out, like on the commercial side?
The 10 years?
Yeah.
I believe it includes that. I'm sorry, the 15 years. It includes that, but it also, you know, they've got, they're not going to build this project, and so, they're going to be talking to developers, and so, there may be some negotiation, give them some time.
Go steady with somebody and then get married to make it happen, right?
Exactly. And I did reference, you know, a little bit of uncertainty in the housing market. I mean, there's a lot going on in this day and age, and so, you know, with some uncertainty out there, you may need a little additional time to plan for these projects, and that's one of the reasons why we felt 15 years was an appropriate length of time for this agreement.
And then, the public safety, $1 million. There's a formula for that, that you work up in terms of there's going to be 480 units total?
Councilmember Avery, there really isn't a formula for that, and that was just a negotiation between staff and the developer for that fee. And where that really comes from is really the 2006 General Plan EIR, which identified if the fire marshal, I'm sorry, if the fire chief needs it, additional apparatus in the airport area to protect public safety, because we have all these residential units there. You know, that requirement has kind of morphed over the years. It's really an ambulance unit that we're seeking that would be coming out of Fire Station 7. So, we don't need a new fire station, we don't need a new building, but we do need a new fire ambulance unit, and we need the staff to support that. And that comes at significant expense. But back to your question, there really isn't a formula here.
Which is sort of a dartboard, $1 million?
Well, I wouldn't say it's a dartboard, but we've negotiated similar fees of the last development agreements that you've seen. We did $1 million for the Harbor Point project. Yes. One of the options that we've been looking at is to develop and adopt a communities financing district for the airport area that would then establish a fee that we'd apply to all residential projects, or it may apply in other ways to commercial or non-residential. We haven't obviously developed that fee. And so, we're at a period where we may need to create that financing district to help us finance the ongoing costs of the equipment and personnel, but we haven't developed that district at this point. So, this project is here now, and what we'd like is to have them pay some fees through the negotiation, through the development agreement, to help us offset those costs for that additional ambulance unit and the personnel that would go with it.
And it would be hard to calculate now what our share of property tax revenue would be from those units as well, right?
With the increment that would be coming from this project?
Right.
We would expect to see some property tax increment for the project.
Oh, yeah, of course. It's just the number, right?
Exactly. There is actually a financial analysis that was done for the project site, and if you read that section in the report, and I know you did, it shows that residential uses actually don't really pay their way the way that commercial, especially retail, does. Now, while that is true, you know, that's a modeling function, if you will, but I also want to make sure you understand that the assumptions that were built into that modeling, we assumed and planned for 2,200 units in the airport area. And so, this project is well within the analytical assumptions of the general plan. We knew that this kind of a revenue impact would occur. We're going to have increased costs to the city to help serve this area.
Absolutely.
And the development agreement fees that you saw help offset some of those costs.
Right.
In addition to any new property taxes that would be coming from it. And obviously, there wouldn't be any sales taxes coming unless there was a small retail component.
So, the term you use, "help offset," so these fees are not meant to offset the fees entirely. They're just a portion of what needs to be done to kind of take care of the additional load. There's probably going to be 700 people living here with that many units.
Yeah, we might anticipate two to two and a half people per unit coming in. So, yes, you could see that kind of population. We feel that this number, the numbers that you see there for the public safety fee is proportional to the impact of the project.
You can kind of guess what, how much you need to respond, public safety, to that many people over a years' period or something, right? The fire department, I'm sure, has all that figured out.
They do. And the basic need that we see is really in the medical response and not in some, you know, very large ladder truck, if you will, to get to a multi-story building. Those buildings are fairly, are very safe with sprinklers and all, but it's really the medical need that the fire department has identified as their future need in the area.
Thank you.
And then, one more, Ms. Dixon.
Yes, just to follow up on Mr. Avery's questions, if you could go back to the development agreement page, please.
Certainly.
In many of the words you just responded was, "we think and we guess, and, you know, in 2006, this is what we wanted, is 2,200 housing units." I don't hear anything concrete. And so, going forward, I'm not suggesting anything about this agreement, but it just strikes me that we need more certitude. We need a framework. We need a policy framework for development agreements because they're all over the place. I mean, we did one for Vivanti and Museum House, and there was significantly different numbers for, per unit. And so, now, it's kind of which way the wind's blowing, and it's a negotiation. I think my, this is my personal opinion, going forward, again, not respecting this agreement with housing and particularly anywhere in the city, but we know it's going to be primarily in the airport area. I think we need more, and without a general plan update, I think we need more solid financial framework to pig development agreements with, because this isn't based on anything I'm familiar with, and we know we're going to have more of it. And so, just to say, I guess, we think we're going to have 400 people, we could have another 2,000 people. An ambulance costs more than $1 million, so you said this is for an ambulance. I mean, we really don't know. We're just kind of throwing things against the wall, if you ask my opinion. So, my recommendation is we need a policy, and maybe this is something the Finance Committee worked with staff on, that if we're going, we know we're going to be identifying 4,900 housing units in the next two years, and we're going to be working with a lot of developers, and we want to encourage them. And affordable housing is really important. But are we subsidizing? I mean, this is significantly less than other development agreements per unit, per residential unit. Are we subsidizing affordable housing? Maybe that's a good idea because we need to do it. We know that housing is a priority. I don't have an opinion one way or the other, but we should have a policy to guide our thinking instead of sending staff out to do these negotiations without a framework, and particularly given what we know going forward. We need a lot of these development. Development's very important in our city. It's the last remaining area. We are essentially built out except for this area. We ought to do it right. There is going to be service level demands, public safety demands, infrastructure demands, transportation demands. None of that has been assessed within this, and it would not be fair to assign all that to this project, but in the totality of what we're talking about, the airport area, I think we need more economic impact information. That would be my recommendation for future projects that we look at and analyze, because right now, wearing my Finance Committee hat, we have, I don't know if Dan M. is here, but we have like $12 million left in our facilities financial reserve fund, when we used to have $100 million. And we have about 30 years' worth of projects to repair and maintain our capital, our physical capital facilities, bricks and mortar, and that's not going to, $12 million that's currently there is not going to pay for our new police headquarters. That's been on the books for a number of years, and it's probably five or 10 years out. We don't have the development to fund, plan to fund these capital projects that make Newport Beach the fine city that it is, that supports our quality of life, supports our property values. And we're going to be doing a lot of these projects. I think we need a better system. So, that's my recommendation for tonight. But I think this is good. I'm glad we're making the general plan. Usually, we sit up here and there's a big fight about general plan amendments. I think this is a good general plan amendment. If people want to live next to the airport, I think it's the right zoning change to do. It shows that general plans can be modified for the right reasons, so I'm totally in favor of it. I just think we need to have a system, a policy for negotiating or putting a framework around development agreements going forward. Thank you.
All right. Is it a good time to switch over to the applicant now?
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay. All right, we'll go to the applicant now.
On behalf of John Saunders, who's here with me this evening, we have a PowerPoint presentation, but the staff's presentation was so comprehensive that we don't need to get into that. I'll just speak to some of the issues that were raised by the city council members, and if you have any questions, Sean Matzler, our attorney, and John Saunders are here with me this evening, and we can answer your specific questions. So, I started talking briefly at the last hearing about the real history of this project, and I'd like to thank Mr. Campbell for the well-done slide on the recent history. But let me take you back to 2005 or so, when John Saunders worked with the Newport Beach City Council as part of the general plan amendment and update that was done in 2006. So, John diligently attended the committee meetings and advocated for the airport area, which you see in front of you this evening are the units that were created as part of that process. However, this particular site was not included in the 2006 General Plan Update as one of the MUH2-zoned properties. So, in the 2014 update, which we started attending hearings, I myself, on behalf of Mr. Saunders, in 2013, we attended over nine hearings of the city's Land Use Element Update Committee, and we earned our spot in that general plan update in 2014 through the committee's recommendation and later, the council's agreement that this site would be appropriate for residential. So, they certified the EIR that studied residential being on this site, in addition to many other things that were done in 2014. And the Airport Land Use Commission during 2014 found it to be inconsistent, and the Newport Beach City Council overrode their finding as part of that certification. And ultimately, the voters of Newport And ultimately, the voters of Newport Beach did not adopt Measure Y, and so, immediately in December of 2014, we came in and we filed a standalone general plan amendment application for this particular project, which is before you this evening. So between 2013, 2014, and today, the original application was 329 market rate units. Staff asked us, as part of the RENA planning, to consider affordable housing on the site, and we decided that that would be a good idea, and we were happy to work with staff collaboratively on one of the sites that is possible for affordable housing in the city of Newport. One quick item, just for your consideration, because this is not an easy process. When I first applied in December of 2014, I was told that the site needed to be a minimum of 10 acres. Luckily, Mr. Saunders owns enough acreage in this one particular site to be able to meet the city's general plan requirement of 10 acres. Tonight, you hear something about the density, and the density being calculated over the overall acres. This is one of those items that the council's going to have to struggle through as you go through your later general plan land use housing update, because there are not many sites of this size left in the airport area. There are not many owners like Mr. Saunders that can tack on additional properties, and in this case, they were within the airport noise contour line, so they were not available for residential development, but they were available for us to put into the application in order to meet the general plan requirement of 10 acres. So, we added the affordable housing with the staff at their request, and notwithstanding the fact that a development agreement is required in the airport area, we requested one. And the reason why we requested a development agreement was because of what's in front of you this evening. It's the legislative change to allow residential on this site, which first happened in 2014. So if the council will approve this this evening, these residential units will be vested for the period of the development agreement, and we can set out to get the developer in place and bring forward a site development plan that your planning commission, and if the council wants to see it, it would go up through the city's land use discretionary approval process. So, this is the beginning of the process. The reason for the term on the DA is because we can't guarantee how fast we're going to be able to get through that next step, but what we do need is the certainty that we did not get in 2014, that this site would be available for residential use, and that the units would be available for this particular site to go through the further planning. So, just a brief discussion of the Airport Land Use Commission. I have personally been involved in probably 25, 30 projects that have gone through Airport Land Use Commission. Only one of them was ever found to be consistent, and it was not in the airport area. Every other one was found to be inconsistent and was later overridden by city councils, and no issues of liability have ever occurred, and as your city attorney attested, it's not a big concern because of the way the ordinance is written, but you guys have already covered that. The development agreement that we negotiated with the city, wanted to speak to very briefly, Mr. Campbell outlined the terms and the times in which the deposits are to be paid, and notwithstanding the fact that the development agreement term is 15 years, and we have to go through the process of selecting a developer and putting together a site development that can get through the city's discretionary review process, Mr. Saunders has offered to write a check for $2 million within 30 days of approval. And there needs to be some consideration given to that fact, because very few developers that are, you know, residential REITs or full-time, you know, apartment or condo developers would ever offer to do something like that, because it's all about carry costs and getting construction loans, et cetera. In this case, Mr. Saunders has been the property owner for a very long time, has been working at this process for over 14 years, and is willing to pay that public benefit fee to the city of Newport Beach almost immediately, so that the city can do with it what the council determines is in the best interest of the city to do. But that first payment will be made immediately, and you won't find that in many other development agreements that you ever consider. So, I wanted to mention that because it's unique, it's a very generous offer, because as Mr. Campbell stated, and as Mrs. Dixon, Councilwoman Dixon, asked, there is a housing shortage, but there is also an uncertainty on construction loans and development companies, where, you know, one year ago, we would have had 100 interested buyers for this site. Because of the coronavirus and the uncertainty in the marketplace and the uncertainty of financing, there's a much smaller group of potential builders for this site. Certainly, there are many, but not as many as there once were. So, the purpose of the DA term is to grant us enough time to get through the city's discretionary approval process, but I'm glad that Mr. Saunders started this in '06. I appreciate the council in '14 advocating that this site become residential, and I very much appreciate staff's work to get us through this process from then till now. We are here to answer any questions you may have, and we look forward to your approval of this project tonight, so that we can start the process of getting much-needed housing in this part of the city. So thank you, and we're here for any questions you may have.
Okay. I'm not seeing any questions from the dais. All right, at this time, we'll go to public comment. Do we have a public comment in the, okay?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, this is Jim Mosher. First, as Director, Deputy Director Campbell emphasized, you're not actually being asked to approve the project tonight. Most of what you're doing is just putting the proposal on the table for a decision two weeks from now. During those two weeks, I think it would be good for you to reflect on the concern about the timing of this, and whether this particular proposal with its particular proposed mix of affordable housing will indeed fit in to the recommendation you are going to get from your appointed housing element update advisory committee for their overall plan for how affordable housing is going to be implemented in this area. I hope you will also reflect on the fiscal impact report, which was mentioned very briefly. It's summarized on page 14-10, and in much more detail on page 14-203. And while the $10 million of fees are nearly 10 million, nine and a half million that you're expecting sounds very generous, the conclusion is that this project will be a net cost to the city every year from then on of over $600,000 a year compared to what the general plan currently envisions for the area because of these costs that Councilman Avery was pointing out, safety costs and so forth. So, please do look at that fiscal impact report. And although you're mostly just putting the project on the table, the one thing you are doing tonight, as Mr. Campbell mentioned, is certifying for all time the accuracy of the addendum to the two previous EIRs. I don't believe this is one of those SEQA processes where there was a public review, written comments, written responses to them. So I trust that all of you did read that several hundred-page-long addendum that you will be certifying the accuracy of. I trust you did that, but I do wonder how many of you who have read the resolution you're being asked to adopt tonight, because if you did, you will see in it that it says you're giving careful consideration, not only to the comments you're hearing tonight, but to the comments you will be hearing on September 22. And I find it hard to imagine logically how you could be giving careful consideration to comments that you have not yet heard, but that is what the resolution says, and you're being asked to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the community room? No? All right, let's go to the phones. All right, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, Mayor O'Neill and council members. This is Nancy Scarborough. I just wanted to comment that the percentage of the low-income and very-low-income units here is 5%, which is very low, and I just think that it's worth mentioning again that we're talking about 329 units, and we're getting 5%, excuse me, 5% of those in the category that we really are lacking. So, we're talking about so many more units than that to actually meet our 4,800 units that it's, it's just worth noting that we're not talking about 4,800 units, we're talking about 10,000 units by the time we actually meet the reading number, aside from costs or anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other calls? All right. We'll bring it back to the dais. Any further discussion or questions at the dais level? All right, I'm going to move staff recommendation then. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Hurdman. You know what? We'll give it a moment, and we'll wait for Mr. Muldoon to come back, so we have a full vote.
Mayor, would you like me to read the ordinance titles while we're waiting?
I think that'd be a great idea.
Ordinance number 2020-22, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach approving zoning code amendment CA 2014-009, and Plan, Community Development Plan Number PC 2020-02, establishing the Newport Airport Village Plan Community Development Plan located at 4341, 4361, and 4501 Birch Street, 4320, 4340, 4360, 4400, 4500, 4520, 4540, 4570, 4600, and 4630, Campus Drive, and 4525, 4533, and 4647 MacArthur Boulevard. Ordinance number 2020-23, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach approving development agreement number DA 2014-003 for the Newport Airport Village Plan Community Development for the properties located, as I said a little while ago, in 2020-22.
Mr. Muldoon, the motion on the table is approving staff recommendation, seconded by Mr. Hurdman. No discussion, so let's go ahead and vote. No discussion requested, I should say. I'm not saying there's no discussion.
With Councilmember Brenner voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
All right, we'll move now on to item number 15, the emergency ordinance number 2020-008. I think, do we need a staff report?
Item number 15 is specifically the emergency ordinance dealing with mandatory social distancing, face coverings, and restrictions on walk-up bars for eating and drinking establishments. Well, the face coverings deals with the specific issue, we are not looking at the face coverings as a citywide issue, that was the A1 that did not pass tonight. We're dealing with restaurants and walk-up bars. All right, Ms. Brenner.
I just had asked that this be considered, because we did receive a letter from former mayors and council members, Selich, Rosansky, Curry, Hen, Webb, Petros, and Gardner, asking us to do this, and they're, they have formed a committee called Recover Newport on the Road to Recovery, and their concern is how do we really get Newport back into recovery mode, and how do we facilitate our businesses getting up and running as quickly as possible? So, it was their recommendation that we do this, and they had asked us if we would consider having this emergency ordinance. Now, that was back on August the 10th, so now that we've moved into a different tier, things have changed a lot, and so, it's kind of hard to look at what they were asking in terms of where we are today. Knowing, I knew that there was no chance that this council would vote for a mandatory mask policy, but it is an opportunity for us to still encourage people to voluntarily maintain the use of masks and make sure that we don't go back into another spike, because we are very close to really being able to get past a lot of this and get our kids back to school and get our businesses back opening. So, I feel like we should talk about this in terms of what's happening today with the new tier that we're in, and what these regulations would, how they would be affected by the changes. So, it's not exactly the same as it was when they sent this letter to us.
Fair enough. Ms. Dixon.
Well, I'm glad you clarified that, because obviously, it's a question given today that the county has moved into a different tier, which is very good news. I guess what you're saying, Councilmember Brenner, is to, and I fully concur and agree, that we don't want to relax our efforts now, because it's absolutely critical that we continue to improve on the county or the state's tiered mandates, so that all of our businesses can begin to operate and get back to normal. So I fully support the spirit of your intentions there, and I think that's very important in our community, and it is so easy to do. I was, a week ago, I was in Wyoming and Montana, and there's no state mandate or local mandate, but there's signs on every door that says, "Do not enter without a mask, and if you don't have one, here's one." So, and there was total compliance, and people seemed to be happy doing that. I just think we're all pulling together here. I do have a question that I want to ask Mr. Gerges. How many walk-up bars do we have? I've never heard that term before. What's a walk-up bar?
So, my understanding of a walk-up bar is just a bar counter where a member of the public can go up to a bar counter and order a drink from a server. So as far as the number of those types of business transaction, we only know of one, which was at the Peninsula Kitchen and Bar. That's the only one we know of. I've asked my code enforcement staff this morning that exact question, and they, all three of them looked at each other, they said they're not aware of any others. Now, it doesn't mean you can't have a bar. Most of the bars are internal, and there's a bartender mixing drinks.
But these are external walk-up bars?
That's correct, external, that's correct. Restaurants have bars, and they make drinks, and the server will take those drinks out to the outdoor dining.
Peninsula actually moved a bar outside, was that permissible?
They set up some makeshift counter where they were able serving drinks, and people were going up to them, and it was just kind of the machine there. So that's all I know of.
All right, but, so this is not a widespread issue that we would need to require this type of?
I don't know of any others.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Mr. Avery.
Yeah, so I guess my understanding, Mayor, we, 25% capacity now in this new tier?
For restaurants, bars are still closed.
Yeah, yeah, bars are still closed. And I think, so, to Ms. Brenner's point, that things change rapidly, and so this has changed. And I think also, we have some new resolve in part of code enforcement to take some action, which I think is really important on this. At the same time, really, you've got to have a solid violation to be able to do that, someone who's really, really flouting the current code. And so, I'm heartened by that, because I think we really want to, when a business is so far out of line, they're not being fair to the businesses that are suffering because they can't generate the same revenue. So, when you have someone that's ignoring the code and the guidelines, it's unfair to the other businesses. So to keep business healthy and to keep customers healthy, we really need effective code enforcement in times, in these times. And it's not punitive code enforcement, we're not looking to get you, these are things that are just so apparent to anybody that would be looking, you just go, "This is, this has got to be dealt with." And so, I'm heartened by that. And then, I'm looking forward, like, I think about our responsibility going forward to this winter, and if we have a recurrence, how it's important for us to act quickly to, you know, follow, to help support the guidelines that come down to us, and at the same time, walk that line that we've been struggling with for so long to get right, is that personal freedom, people able to enjoy the beach, people not People not being forced to do things? People being encouraged and hopefully doing the right things? And we keep everybody safe as possible and not infringe on their rights. But at the same time, demonstrate as we've been doing it with these face masks, the, the right behavior to, to everyone. And it's a tough, it's a tough, it's a tough thing. And I'm just glad to see the, the needle moving in the right direction. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. I'm not sure if it's a Simone or Aaron question. Currently, who has jurisdiction regarding capacity of restaurants and legality of bars? That currently falls under whose enforcement?
You know, anytime there's any state law, it, it's typically the police department and does the enforcement with regards to our emergency use permit that we have allowed for restaurants to be outside where the code enforcement is handling those conditions on those use permits. If we do get complaints, code enforcement receives a complaint, we still follow up and have a conversation with the operator of that establishment.
And where does the county health department come in?
My understanding from county health is that they've been doing some inspections throughout, making sure that the staff are wearing their face coverings, they're following those protocols. They are, they were proactive with regards to the state mandates with the face coverings. And they follow up with any additional complaints. And I also understand ABC has been going out there too and doing enforcement action too, to make sure that, that the alcohol service is within the confines of the, kind of that dining area.
ABC falls under Sacramento or basically state jurisdiction.
That's correct.
Both entities, ABC, involved with alcohol and...
Health.
And the local health department, they have their own enforcement.
Correct.
They can walk in without a permit because it's a public location.
Correct.
Without a warrant. I'm surprised you didn't call me out there on that mistake, Will.
No, no. Go ahead.
They can walk in without a warrant, choose citation under power of state, state power essentially. And they can and do regulate that activity already.
They do. Correct.
I understand there were some times that I think we've had to regulate that activity as well? Or only, or at least give warnings?
When we get complaints, we follow up, we give warnings, we talk to the establishment. And with our emergency use permit program, we have conditions that we enforce, that we've actually stated conditions that you shall abide by the state guidelines, that you shall close by a certain number of hours, that your occupancy will not exceed what you had in the building. So we actually have our own conditions that we enforce.
So, thank you very much. I, I see actually very strong logic, and I understand, Julie, why you had the initial thought. Of these good operators that are following the rules, or operators that are not following the rules. But I would argue that the entities, the legal entities are already in place. We've issued friendly warnings here in our city. We're very pro-business city. And there've been so, lots of friendly warnings from Sacramento and, and from the county under state's mandate. So I essentially view this as just another layer of, of regulations and garment that would not be needed at this time. And I think, I think you're right, Councilmember Brenner. I think everything is changed, it's changing so quickly, it, it makes your head spin. So I, um, I'm guessing that there really is, is no more support for this item. I could be mistaken though, but I'm looking for it here as the public says. Thank you.
Thank you. Just real quick, since I haven't spoken yet, I'll, I'll speak and then go to Ms. Dixon and then Ms. Brenner. Yeah, I appreciate that clarification. I, I have to say, I have sort of talked to some of those members of our former mayor committee and sort of politely asked them if they would have actually supported this when, when they were on council. But that's perhaps a, a different conversation. But yeah, look, I mean, the, kind of expanding a little bit on what Councilmember Muldoon was saying. At this point, it's, 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 I think this is essentially covered by the health orders that have been in place in the, at the state level and at the county level. And our police are able to enforce all health orders if they, if they find the need to. The state agent, this, the state of California, I think our governor calls them strike teams, has sent strike teams around the state right now, including CHP, ABC, OSHA, a whole bunch of state agencies. They've been in Orange County. I've heard they've been in Newport. And then the county health agency as well has issued its own orders, updated today, in fact. And then can be issued, can be enforced by, you know, the sheriff can be enforced by their own health agency to, to Mr. Muldoon's point. And then our city manager and I actually on Friday mornings are on a call with all the other mayors and city managers with the health director, Orange County Health Director and CEO, and the most recent one, last Friday. The county CEO said that at this point, everyone has been pretty well educated. And at this point, the expectation is that you, you know, you, you as a business know the, the rules in place, and they'll probably be a little more aggressive on the, on the county health side of things. So on this one, and, and look, I mean, I won't say the name of the establishment because I'm not going to give them any extra publicity, but we had a revocation this weekend of a, of an outdoor permit. And that is a good indication of enforcement. It's, it's, it's a good indication that, you know, we have the laws in place to be able to, to ensure compliance. It's a good reminder that, yeah, we moved tiers. This thing's still here. And people need to take, first off, people need to take personal responsibility. And I think that most people in Newport have. And that's one of the reasons we've seen such a dramatic decrease, especially in hospitalizations. But we all know someone, I mean, most of us up here know of someone who has died with COVID in the last month. Most of us have known a number of people who have caught the virus. And we all have a general idea now of where the high-risk situations are, and we need not put them, put ourselves in those places. But at a minimum, we should be able to expect our establishments, especially the ones that we've been helping dramatically, to bridge forward on these outdoor permits, to take the responsibility of making sure that they're not putting people into those situations like, like it seems that we had someone do this weekend. So it's, it's one of those things where we've seen the, we, we have the enforcement. We've started the enforcement. We've certainly had a number of conversations. We're seeing state agency, county agency. And so, yeah, I, I understand the sentiment behind this one. So I, and I will just preview this for everybody. When, when this comes back for public comment, I'm just going to be, I'll, I'll be moving to, to table it indefinitely. So that's, I just want to at least preview kind of procedurally what I was planning on doing. Ms. Dixon.
You said a couple of things that I just wanted to comment on. In terms of enforcement, I wanted to, first of all, thank Simone and his team because on this emergency order that you've been operating under, how you've extended, how many restaurants now are operating under your emergency permit?
About 110.
110. And that's fantastic that we have facilitated through your actions, your very prompt turnaround actions, fast-track actions, we've facilitated these businesses to thrive to the best of their ability within those physical limitations. I just want to say publicly that it's important, we have tremendous, a number, the majority, the vast majority of our restaurant and bar establishments are complying with the local and state mandates. And a few, as the mayor mentioned, at least one, did not comply. And the action that the staff took was the right one. I just want to ask a question about enforcement. We've got all these layers of enforcement. Simone, do you have code enforcement on the weekends when, of course, summer may now be over? And hopefully all those, the busy crowds are over. But what do you do on weekends on code enforcement?
So we do have one code enforcement officer that works really a kind of a 7:30 to 5:30 shift, Saturday and Sunday. And every month, we do have a small team that does bar inspections because we do have use permits. Now we have these emergency use permits, so we have a small team that does, once a month, those nighttime restaurant and bar inspections.
Good. That's outstanding. Okay. Very good. Well, keep up the good work. Thank you very much.
All right. Ms. Brenner.
My question was just, is there anything more that you need from us as, as far as the new regulations and where we are with the next tier and everything? It seems that this could be withdrawn unless there's something that we actually need to do to give you the tools to keep the people from going crazy. We know people are excited about opening up and, and getting back to some semblance of normalcy. So if there's any, not anything else that you need from us, then I'd be willing to even withdraw this.
Councilmember Brenner, I appreciate that, that question. I actually think we are good because even with the, in the tiers, what's mandated by the state and also came out with the county guidelines is to continue the social distancing, have masks on when social distancing can't be accomplished. And all that is in place, and those are requirements that we have under our emergency temporary use permits as well. So I, I think we have the ability with what the state and the county mandates are and requiring all businesses to follow those as well, that we have all those to put in place as part of our conditions.
Okay. All right. We'll go to a public comment on this item.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, this is Jim Mosher. It sounds obviously like you're not going to adopt this, but I would just like to point out that I think procedurally, it would be difficult for you to adopt it even if you wanted to tonight because I think there's a real noticing problem with this. The agenda said that this item was a proposal about regulations about walk-up bars, which we just heard what they were. Even the staff report, quote to it, it says, "The ordinance addresses restrictions for dining establishments with walk-up bars." The public has a right to expect that what you adopt will actually be what you notice on the agenda. But if you look at the ordinance that has been presented to you, which is on page 15-9, section 2, the first sentence of that says, "Dining areas in all eating and drinking establishments in the city of Newport Beach shall be organized such that blah, blah, blah." Nothing there about walk-up bars or limiting that to alcohol servicing establishments or outdoor, or whatever it's supposed to be. Look at the last sentence of it. "All volunteers, agents, and employees of eating and drinking establishments shall wear face coverings, blah, blah, blah." Nothing there restricting that to walk-up bars. There's just one short sentence in the center that is restricted to those. The other provisions may be good. They may be redundant with provisions you already have in place. But they are part of this ordinance, and they were not announced on the agenda as being part of it. So I don't think it could be adopted anyway. Thank you.
All right. Any calls? No. All right. We'll bring it back. The, the cleanest way to, the cleanest way to handle this, if we don't intend on having an up or down on any of the merits, would simply be to, to move to table indefinitely. So that's, I think, based on our conversations, that's what we're going to do. So I'm, I'm going to move to table the, the item indefinitely. Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Dixon. Any discussion? All right. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right. We'll move now into the next item, which will be the COVID update. We'll start with our city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll just speak probably very briefly since there's been a lot of discussion now on the, on the tiers and the, being in the red tier now. And then I'll turn it over to Chief Boils to talk a little bit about our, our own stats here. So as has been mentioned, just over a week ago, the governor did put out this new framework for the reopenings. And there's a set of four tiers based on risk level. And we were on that purple tier, that top one, where it's considered widespread risk levels going on. But as was just discussed quite a bit here, Orange County, along with four other counties in the state, have been moved into the, into the red tier. So that's very good for us. The state in putting us into that tier did put the numbers for Orange County at 5.2 new cases per 100,000. So you're, you see we're slightly in that four to seven range of new cases in the red. But also note that the positivity rate for Orange County was 4.2%. And what's good about that is that's actually in that moderate, that next tier, down in that moderate orange tier level. So really, if that number continues and reduces, and the number of new cases comes down and we get under that 3.9, we would be able to move, Orange County would be moving into that moderate tier. I will also mention this whole framework, the governor talks frequently about slow and stringent. So you need to be in that tier. You need to meet the criteria for two weeks, and it, it actually takes three weeks, 21 days, to move into that next tier. So the soonest, you know, is three weeks. But still, everything being on that positive trend, I think is, is very good across the board for us. So, and what's very encouraging is in this red tier, we have several areas that can open up, and that is effective immediately, which is also a good thing. As well as with that in-person schooling that could begin September 22nd, and that's without any kind of state waiver. Schools that have the state waiver are opening, but this will allow others to go in as well. So in the red tier, I'll just highlight very briefly. I think one of the, the most positive aspects is that indoor dining can be opened at 25% capacity. You start to see on the gym and fitness centers, which we've heard a lot about, to actually see those open on the indoor side. 10% small, but at, at least that's that first step there. And you can see some of the other major categories here with just more being allowed on the indoor side. Oops. Excuse me. Let me back up. On our own city facility side, it was nice to see, even in the, with the new framework, even in that purple tier, that libraries are allowed to reopen at a 25% capacity. So the minute we saw that, we jumped on putting plans together. So our library staff has been very busy getting everything situated from the physical, you know, improvements, you know, safety measures that we need, as well as on our staffing side. So we are targeting September 21st to reopen our main branch with that 25% capacity. So very excited about that. Our city hall is closed. We had closed it, I want to say, right after the Fourth of July period when the surge had happened, just to, to ensure from a spread perspective amongst employees that we wouldn't have that and to really contain that. So we, I had implemented an AB team where employees were in, kind of alternated coming into the office every other day to try to just not mix groups of people and try to spread people out. With the latest numbers coming down and being positive, we have released back so not to have the AB teams and start to transition and employees back in. And I think continuing to do that and having more, more employees come back into the office on a regular basis, we'll start to look at that, the reopening of city hall. And I, I think the target will be kind of matching up with, with the library itself and looking at that timeframe there. But we don't have a specific date yet as we're just looking at how the employees are coming back in. And we do have a lot of employees who are also dealing with the childcare and the daycare types of issues with the school reopening. So we're kind of looking at all that together there. Unfortunately, there was no guidance coming out on the state side. While they had the specifics on the libraries, it was very specific to libraries. It wasn't to community centers. So we are still watching and waiting for that and really pushing on the county and the state side to, hopefully those, we get more guidance on that because we would love to see, you know, certainly there's been demand on the recreation activities, and we're doing those on the outdoor basis. We'd really like to get into our community centers and be able to offer up on that side as well. So...
Hang on just one second.
We're watchful of that, for that. Yes.
Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. So even though gyms are, a lot of the open at 10% in private capacity, we don't have any instructions regarding our own gym at Oasis, for example?
That is correct. We, you know, that, and that's a very good point. I can, we can certainly ask for clarification if it's gyms, because those were meant for the private businesses, as far as I understand. But we haven't seen anything specifically on our own types of community centers and facilities. But given that there's a gym at the Oasis, it's something we can follow up on and get clarification.
Thank you.
That's a good one. Okay. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Boils.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Jeff Boils, Fire Chief. I want to give you a real quick overview on our Wildland Mutual Aid Fire Res... I want to give you a real quick overview on our Wildland Mutual Aid fire responses, since that's another topic in the news right now. The Newport Beach Fire Department currently has eight personnel deployed to two different fires. We have the Valley Fire down in San Diego County, which you see here is the front cover of this morning's San Diego Union Tribune. That's our Newport Beach fire engine is the first one with Huntington Beach right behind them, and then a whole cadre of fire engines from Orange County. We also have a fire engine out in the El Dorado Fire in San Bernardino County. And as I reported last time, we had 17 personnel deployed up to Northern California in the Napa, Santa Cruz, Vacaville areas. They all returned last week. They were back in the town. We sent one of our fire engines to the shop to get overhauled. They were about 48 hours all home, and we started redeploying to the other fires. So having said that, as of yesterday, if you listen to KFI, they reported today that the acreage burned on the fires already in 2020 is the most acres burned in California history. So we're at 2.1 million acres already as of yesterday Labor Day, which surpasses 1.9 million acres from the 2018 firestorms. And we just moved into red flag warning for today through Wednesday night. So we haven't even really seen the Santa Ana winds yet, which is really kind of concerning us. And I believe Mr. Muldoon asked me last council meeting, what concerns me right now? And I said, no, it's the fires that are on the horizon. Over Labor Day weekend, on a positive note, we got through Labor Day weekend without any serious public safety issues that I'm aware of, unless my partner John Lewis had any on the police side. But from lifeguarding and fire, our Code 3 responses were up 25% from Labor Day of 2019. I think that's probably a result of all the people that were at our beaches are really crowded. We estimate over 310,000 people attended Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday over the Labor Day weekend. So we were quite crowded. All the parking lots were crowded. The streets were full with the meters. Lifeguards performed 51 ocean rescues. And with the lifeguards and police protecting the beaches and managing all those crowds, it was pretty impressive. But I think it would, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out our partners with Public Works and how much they did with the beaches of keeping them clean and keeping the boardwalks and the sand functioning as well with all those people. It's pretty impressive.
Hang on just one second. Ms. Brenner?
I didn't mean to interrupt, but I'll just say right now that I have never, in all my years, seen as many emergency vehicles as I saw this past three days. You guys must have had everybody going nonstop. It was incredible. And, you know, I live on a street where they go up and down all the time. But I have never seen so many emergency vehicles just going constantly. So great job, and please thank all of your personnel for us.
I skipped over that stat, because I didn't want to read. I was trying to go extemporaneous here. But we did have 330 Code 3 responses over the weekend. So, and that excludes the police cars. So they were rolling around. There were quite a few people, but like I said, I'm not aware of anything overly significant. Ms. Leon, can you flip the slide to my next COVID on our local responses? Our total medical call volumes increased also in the month of August over 2019. So you may remember, I've been reporting since about March, it had been down. Our hospital transports with our ambulances were down, and our overall medical calls were down. I believe police activity was down at one time, too, when everybody was retreating into their homes. But now they're coming back out. They're coming to the beach, so we're getting a little more busy. We transported 14 COVID-positive patients in August and three so far this month in September, for a total of 58 since our first positive back in the spring. Internally, we've not have any more firefighters test positive or lifeguards. So we landed at 10 positive firefighters, 15 positive lifeguards. That was that month of July where we had our outbreak. It worked through lifeguard headquarters. It worked through some of our fire stations. We had a total of 74 employees quarantined in about a three and a half week period, which was pretty difficult staffing-wise, but we pulled it off. And everybody is back and healthy now, except for the ones that have been deployed out onto the fires. With the help of our EMS Division Chief, Kristin Thompson, we were able to procure 5,000 more N95 masks through the county. So we're pretty robust again on our PPE, so we're happy with that. The case trends with the 18 and 34-year-old age group tends to still be the highest. They account for almost 60% of the positive cases. There can be a lot of theories there. There are also kind of the working age group. There are also, I don't know, anyone to speculate on, but they are the highest group still. Our daily average in Newport Beach is still trending downward, which is about five average positive cases per day. And at our high, we were up around 17 per day here in Newport Beach back in August. Our hospitalizations around the county are still experiencing about a 30% to 40% bed availability. So that's holding steady. And the hospitalizations and ICU admits of COVID patients are back to their early May levels. So that was before it started to trend up. In June, it was trending higher, and then in July, you might remember, it really spiked. So we're looking at numbers that are back, if you look at a bar graph, back to where we were in May. So the ICU availability is about 30% countywide, ventilators over 63%. And our overall numbers continue to trend downwards. So I think that's good. We moved from the purple into the red. We need to continue to pull together and keep doing what we're doing. It seems like we're trending in the right direction. Hopefully, keep on the trajectory that we're on. And that's all I have. I stand ready for any questions.
Come on, Kevin. I'm just kidding.
Are you happy with the fire trucks? You got your fire trucks.
Thank you for the two fire engines.
Yeah, no, there are a lot of positive data sets coming out. I actually was reading today the current RT. And just a quick reminder, if it's at one, that means we're spreading, it's kind of even spread. And then if it's below, that means that the spread is slowing down. It's currently in California at 0.84, which is great, because it used to be far, far bigger than that. So anyway, we got to keep that going. Got to keep these trends coming. Anyway, one, you know, one other thing, just as a quick side note, because this was something else discussed at the meeting on Friday with the, with our Public Health Director and our, and the CEO of the county. The new tier guidelines that come out of the state, they only track two categories right now. They track positivity rates, which is if you have 100 tests and three people test positive, it's 3%. That's the positivity rate. They also do case counts. And so it's how many positive tests over a seven-day period with a seven-day lag. What's the average of, out of 100,000 people? And the interesting thing is that's, most people would kind of assume that that is the case count. They actually aren't doing it based on a case count. They're doing it on what they call an adjusted case count. The adjusted case count actually takes into account the number of tests being performed inside the county. And if you are above a certain number of tests being performed in the county per day, based on, out of 100,000 people, they'll actually reduce your actual case count by factor. So if you're above, I think, 240, so right now, Orange County is right around 186 per day out of 100,000. If you're above, I think it's 240, it'll reduce your actual case count by 12%. And that's for the tier discussions. So San Francisco is way up there. They're up at around 456 tests per 100,000. And they are able to reduce their actual case count by 40% when they're up that high. So when the metrics were coming out last week, and people were trying to figure out, wait, why is San Francisco on red and Orange County is on purple? Because the case count in, in, the case rate, I should say, the case rate in San Francisco was almost double Orange County's. But because they were able to drop by 40%, they actually came into the red for two straight weeks. And so I mention that, because we may actually end up seeing a strong push for a lot more testing in Orange County, particularly on a tier, if we're looking at it from a tiers perspective in particular, because the more testing you do, the likelihood is that you're going to see a much lower positivity rate. And the more testing you do, as long as you get up above, it would be, it would not be a good idea to get around like 230. I think the metric's 240, but it wouldn't be a good idea to get to 230 and not keep going, because if you do that, then now you're probably going to catch some, a lot of asymptomatic people. And I mention all of this, because, one, we probably are going to see a stronger push for testing as we keep moving forward. And, two, we're probably going to see a strong push for testing at some of these supercenter sites, like Costa Mesa, actually, just, so we've got two in Orange County right now. One's in Anaheim, and one's in Costa Mesa over the fairgrounds. There's probably going to be a fairly strong push for essential workers to start getting these free tests that are being offered at these supercenter sites. And, you know, essential workers, we've found out, I mean, I recognize, I actually think that pretty much all workers are essential. But in terms of the legal definition of essential that the governor has put out, you know, as schools get back in, it may be that all teachers should be getting tested fairly regularly. All of the staff that goes along with teaching, grocery workers, restaurant workers, even, you know, to a certain degree, city employees, that when we have free testing going on at these supercenter sites, they have a lot of capacity right now. And it's good for the tiered system to be able to reopen our county faster. We're probably going to see a push for it, and I wanted to at least explain that this is something the state hasn't exactly talked about and explained, that that's, this adjusted case metric matters a lot. And I'd, anyway, it's, it's kind of, it's an interesting, I won't get into what I think about the tiers, but I'm abundantly clear in public lately on what I think of it. But anyway, so, but I will say, now that we are in this tiered system, it's worth at least understanding what the actual metrics are, because it's not, it's not actual case rate. It's actually this one. Anyway, Mr. Muldoon?
Yeah, I just want to add, and Will's the guru on the subject, but it's not like you can go to a website and they explain this. You're scratching your head, you're saying, wait, how are we in the zone in San Francisco? It's not. I think the assumption is that unless you have testing to prove otherwise, your infectious rate is X, or you have X amount of people in your population that are infected. So it used to be, oh, you know, hey, stop getting tested or don't distribute the test, because it's making our numbers climb. In fact, those numbers that are actually tested help defeat the notion that we are higher than we are. And it reflects either our learning and our hygiene and the mask effectiveness of how we decide to live, or perhaps the disease, or the virus is not as infectious as we thought, or it's getting less infectious over time. It's really fascinating. And if you wonder what keeps some of us up at night, this is it, which is a problem in and of itself. We have our own sickness. But it is good news, I think, that we're learning that in all actuality, many people think they have it and they're testing positive. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, they're testing negative, excuse me. So there's a psychological component to it, or maybe they have the common cold, we're not totally sure. But more testing is good. It's great. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, no, you're right. This is what I read about at night. Yeah, actually, I mean, so the interesting thing is, I will finish this up, I'll finish up on this point, because Dixon said, well, maybe we should just all get tested. And the answer is sort of, yeah. And the thing is, I made that point, actually, on the call, because I had tried really, to your point, Mr. Muldoon, I spent a lot of time actually trying to understand what all these metrics mean and looking at spreadsheets that the state had posted on, kind of, it was not the easiest thing to find. But I spent a bunch of time, and I needed to ask some questions of Dr. Chow, who's our health officer in Orange County. And so I started asking those questions, and it spurned this long conversation among elected officials. Wait, wait, should we be encouraging all of our residents now to go? And he said, no, 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 that's not quite what, that's not quite what I'm saying. Because part of the concern is, if you actually fill all the supercenter sites and also all of the clinics and all this other stuff with people just getting tested, you do want your symptomatic people getting tested, and you do want the tests coming back quickly. And he was concerned about a backlog issue. But his point actually ended up being that essential workers, symptomatic or not, should get tested fairly regularly. Yeah, so exactly. So that's the thought process when he was talking about this. And so anyway, I'm highlighting that, because that may end up changing counties, that may end up changing policies, you know, across the board. And so as we're moving through with this, and you start seeing an increased number of discussions about testing, this is why. And so you may end up seeing people adopting, or adapting, I should say, adapting their mask-up campaigns with go get tested too, you know? So we'll see. But anyway, thank you, Chief. Anything else? You know, one other thing, Leilani, I'm going to put you on the spot here. One of the other things that Leilani and I have been talking about at the vote centers, so a lot of people have been asking about the ability to vote in person this year. And so I just wanted Leilani to do a quick, quick update of kind of where we are and where we think we might be in the next few weeks.
Okay, so I've been in contact with the Register of Voters Office, and we have come to some agreements with our community room, Marina Park, Oasis Senior Center, and Newport Coast Community Center to hold the vote centers there. They are thinking it would probably be a five-day vote center, not as in March, where we had an 11-day and the four-day. So it would be five days. We still have all the ballot drop boxes. They are still waiting to receive all the agreements back from all the cities in order to update their website where the facilities are going to be, but they anticipate that to happen this week.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think at some point, we ought to make sure that we have a splash page to kind of help people know that there are a bunch of options on making sure that they've got their votes being counted. Okay, great. Thank you. On this item, we'll open it up to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mayor O'Neil, members of the council. I actually have a comment on this tonight. One aspect of the council's COVID response, excuse me, has, was to attempt to help our struggling restaurants and food-serving establishments through the Newport Beach Restaurant Association Business Improvement District. And back in July, I think the council directed about $80,000 to that organization for them to host a restaurant month, which we're currently in. I know in considering the business improvement districts, the council has had some concern in the past that they're a kind of institution where the many are paying in involuntarily, in this case, perhaps taxpayers for the benefit of a few. The idea is, I understood it when you dedicated the $80,000, was that the restaurant month was going to benefit all of the food servicing, all the food-serving establishments in Newport Beach, certainly all the restaurants equally, to help them all. So I'm a little concerned when this program rolled out on September 1st. It seems to be quite selective in who it is advertising. It's encouraging. Right down the street here at the end of Avocado and Coast Highway, it's encouraging people to frequent the Bungalow Restaurant. It's not advertising or encouraging them to visit Ruby's Diner right down the street. And across the street here, closer to the city hall, Corona Del Mar Plaza, there's many food establishments there, Bristol Farms, Gulfstream. I believe they're all operating. None of them are being promoted through the restaurant week. So I find that a little bit concerning, that the taxpayer money is not being used to promote all of them equally. And I also found curious, when I went back to your July agenda to see the presentation, it did not explain who was, it explained how your 80,000, our $80,000 was being spent. It did not explain who was funding the prizes that are being given away, which I thought was strange. Certainly, it would be a big expense, I would think, when you're putting on a sweepstakes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we'll bring it back. Thank you. All right, so Madam Clark?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council, either this meeting or the previous meeting, may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions? All right, tonight, we're going to be adjourned in memory of George Argrose Jr. George Argrose Jr. was a longtime Orange County resident, who attended Corona Del Mar High School and graduated from Chapman Law School in 1999, later pursuing an entrepreneurial career. George Jr. was an active philanthropist.
George Jr. was an active philanthropist, most notably supporting Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation, City of Hope, and Mariners Christian School in Costa Mesa. George Jr. survived by his wife Shannon, his son George Leon III, his parents George and Julia Argros, his two sisters, and his many nieces and nephews. We stand adjourned.